And I actually thought it was gonna be a great day, go up, up and relax for a couple of ones. Not one fucking good thing happened. The bakery happened.
Sure. Good evening, I'd like to call the City Council Meeting of July eighth, twenty twenty-five to order. Let's please start with the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, moving on to approval of the agenda, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed same sign. Motion carries. Uh, next up is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion to approve?
Whoa, seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Move right into Mayor's comments and open forum. Let's start with Deb Olson. Uh, please stand at the podium, state your name and address, and take a few minutes and share your comments.
So I have two things. First one again, and you addressed it last time I asked about it, why hasn't any progress been made on the city of Foley signs? And also, uh, an addendum to that would be, if the four lanes does go through, who's gonna pay for the moving of the signs to accommodate the new width of the highway? And the second part, I've had a few people that have messaged me, and this is in regards to the Northside project, where they've already, we, all of us have gone through this I and I inspection, and if non-compliant, they had work that they needed to have done. They brought things up to compliance, had the inspector sign off on it, but yet they're getting charged for some pipe that needs to go from their house to the main lines. And so, why?
Thank you, I would make note of that, please, so we can follow up on what that pertains to and how we can further explain. Update on the sign, uh, timbers are up as of yesterday, thankfully, with the water finally cooperating. And, uh, next up is the actual insertion of the sign, so that's being made. Well, design is quite literally happening now, and, uh, and will be laser cut and hopefully ready soon. Uh, but timbers are up, it looks really good, I encourage you to go take a look. And, I forget, what was the other thing, sorry?
Oh, uh, um, that's the second part, I saw about the four lanes.
Oh, the four lanes, yes, uh, well, one, that's a pipe dream as of today. Uh, I, I think I'll be lucky to see four lanes personally, uh, but if it happens, uh, we'll, we'll cross that bridge then.
Oh, don't remind her what, if and when?
If and when, if and when, I'll ask the state for money. Alright, we have, uh, next up, is it Rosalie? Uh, please head to the podium, state name and address, and take a few minutes and share your comments.
Yes, um, my name is Rosalie Masaku, I live at one fifty Cottage Road Avenue, and, um, I, I guess I do too much, I don't need to be a complimenter, but why doesn't we have a street wall? In our council building?
Duly noted.
We have a new flag, and of course, I love it because it's blue, and I, I, I don't understand why the city isn't displaying a new flag.
Alright, we'll make a, we'll make a note of that and...
Okay, and I, I don't know what the cost, but I'd be glad to help fundraise if we need money for a new flag.
Alright, well...
I think it's pretty bad that we don't have it up here.
Well, thank you for, for pointing that out, we'll, we'll have some further discussion about that. Great, uh... Is there anyone else that is, that did not sign up for Mayor's comments and open forum? Okay, moving on to item number six on the agenda, Foley wastewater regionalization project, Jared Bogie, please provide a project update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, and closing your packets this evening is pay estimate twenty-six for the...
Maintenance.
So, pay estimate twenty-six is in your packet, uh, the pay estimate amount is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents. Uh, that reflects approximately ninety-six percent of the total original contract amount, uh, for the improvements. Uh, by, by way of updated, contractors currently working on miscellaneous punchless items, or fine tuning the controls, and I'm happy to stand before you and let you know that we're pumping.
Right.
With that, um, we're recommending approval of the pay estimate number twenty-six to Geislinger and Sons in the amount of three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-one cents.
Uh, follow...
I'd be happy to answer.
Yeah, so thank you for that, a follow-up to the amount and ninety-six percent, uh, to the contracted amount, uh, what does that leave then left remaining outstanding?
Uh, balance to finish is approximately six hundred and forty-three thousand.
And we see... Using that entire amount for finish, for completion? Or are we coming in under...
We're trending under budget.
Punchless items, small, very small.
Nothing major, um, the main thing that we're working on right now is making sure that the controls work the way Mark needs them to and stuff like that, so, yep, nothing major.
No smell or anything?
There's no smell.
Okay, well, uh, I will make a motion to, uh, approve pay application number twenty-six in the amount of three twenty-seven, six twenty-six, and forty-one cents. So, whoa. Motion's been made and seconded, any further comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jared. Moving on to item number seven, twenty twenty-five Northside improvements financing, George Ehlertson?
Yeah, we're having some technical difficulties, so I'm putting him on my cell phone.
Okay.
George, can you hear us?
I, I hear you just fine, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my apologies, um, about, uh, not being present and, and the, uh, using the phone here, but, um, Sarah should have handed out a bond sale summary, um, for the City Council, and I'll, I'll address items on that. Uh, Sarah, is that correct, everybody's got that?
Yes, the Council has the bond sale summary.
Okay, fantastic, um, well, Council, back in June, I attended a meeting with you, and, um, you approved a resolution calling for a bond sale to take place. This is, of course, for your twenty twenty-five Northside Street Utility Improvement Project. So we took financing bids this morning at ten thirty, and I'd like to, as part of this presentation, uh, address, you know, the sale results, uh, the bond rating, uh, et cetera. So, uh, the page two of the handout, uh, essentially hits the highlights of the financing here, so I'll, I'll walk down that page here. Uh, the purpose, like I noted, Northside Street Utility Improvements, uh, the finance plan, uh, working with your staff, and, and certainly you, Council, would have seen, uh, kind of financing scenarios of fifteen years, twenty years. It was felt that it, a, a little bit longer term, especially with some of the larger assessments on this project, uh, would make sense for your taxpayers, so, uh, the bonds are structured with a twenty-year term. Um, working our way down to rating results, um, we worked with Sarah and Monica on the assignment of the city's existing bond rating. The city has an existing double A minus bond rating with standard and pores. Uh, like I tell cities that are in that double A category, that, that's a, a very strong credit when you're in the double A category, so, so kudos to the city there. Uh, I noted three items that are considered credit strengths of the city. Uh, notably, the first one, continued maintenance of very high reserves. Um, your fund balance policy states that you maintain fifty percent of operating expenditures, and at year end twenty twenty-three, you were at a hundred and fifty-six percent, so you're, you're, one of your, uh, probably your strongest, uh, point when you bring your bonds to, uh, the rating agencies, is that, that you've got very strong reserves. Secondly, you've got good financial policies and practices, um, there's a regularly updated CIP, a formal debt and investment policies, as well as formal fund balance policy. And third, a his, history of record, a history, historical record, I'm sorry, of positive financial performance, and that's expected to continue. So those are kind of the key points that went into the reassignment or the affirmation of your existing rating, which is double A minus. So as noted, we took financing bids this morning, we received five bids. Uh, the, the investment bank, Robert W. Baird, was the low bidder, they're from Milwaukee. Uh, they bid with a true interest cost of three point nine eight percent. If I could actually move ahead to one page, Council, to page three, this is the tabulation of bids, and we award based upon the far right-hand column, which is true interest cost. And you can see pretty close bids, we had five bids, uh, and certainly it's a national audience that's bidding on, on your bonds. Uh, Robert W. Baird out of Milwaukee is the low bidder at three point nine seven percent. Uh, as Sarah and I noted, and Sarah's got a very good rep, good memory, the last time we sold bonds in this fashion, Robert W. Baird, uh, was also the low bidder, this was back in two thousand eighteen, so, um, a couple other items of note, Council, the closing date is August sixth, that's the date that funds will hit your account. Um, the final maturity of these bonds, um, actually should say two thousand forty-six, not two thousand twenty-six, uh, because these are twenty-year bonds, and the call feature is February first of two thousand thirty-three and any date thereafter. Uh, that's of note because that's the date that you would have the opportunity to either prepay existing principal or refinance, uh, at, uh, at lower interest rates, uh, depending upon market conditions, so... And that's, uh, relatively early in the overall twenty-year length of your bonds. Uh, generally speaking, about two-thirds of the principal still remains, once you reach the call date, so, uh, we'll keep an eye on that for you as we move forward, and, um, and, and work with your staff on letting you know if, if there's an opportunity, uh, to refinance debt in the future. The bonds were originally sized at five million, one hundred and fifty-five thousand, and the resolution for you to consider tonight has bonds sized at four million, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. And, Council, I'll just direct you briefly to page four, it says Exhibit B, sources and uses. And up at the top of the page, it shows how we arrive at the, um, the sizing of the bonds. As I note, uh, it formerly was a bond sized at five million, one fifty-five. Um, the city has a cash contribution going into the storm sewer part of the project, you can see that, of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as well as what's called reoffering premium. And that is a, a, a fee, if you will, that the investors pay, uh, to earn at a higher rate of return on the bonds. So those two items come in as revenue, um, or a source of funds, so that we can reduce the, uh, the twenty-year bonds to four million and seventy, I'm sorry, four million, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, Mayor and Council, that is a quick overview of the financing, I can certainly address any questions that you have. Uh, I'm pleased with the sale results today, certainly seeing, uh, interest rates less than four percent. Um, so, Mayor, Council, any questions I can address?
No?
No. They don't have any questions, George.
Less than four percent is great.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, oh, oh, hang on.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Then, um, George, you just need them to move approval of the resolution?
Uh, correct, Mayor and Council, the only action for this evening, other than sign, a little, little bit of signing that Sarah has for you, Mayor, uh, is approval of the resolution, correct?
Alright, I, I will make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, uh, approving the twenty twenty-five A bond sale for the Northside Improvement Financing.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Alright, take it up now, George.
Thank you, Sarah.
Alright, we are gonna move on to item number eight, utility rate study presentation by Tammy Umdall. How'd I do?
You did excellent.
Great, from Northland, thank you.
From Northland, I am a colleague of George Ehlertson. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Tammy Umdall is Northland Public Finance, here to present, um, the utility study and the financing. I have a presentation of about fifteen or so slides that I'm going to go through. There is also a much lengthier report, and that I, I'm happy to answer questions, but I'm gonna keep my comments to the presentation. Well, Northland was engaged to complete a study of the city's enterprise funds, to provide recommendation on rate proposed rates and revenue sufficiency over the next decade. And if you've had a chance to look at the report, I wanna indicate to those listening to me this evening, this is a study based upon certain assumptions, it is meant to be macro, it is not your budget, you make decisions when you do your budget and adopt your fee schedule. So as I go through the presentation this evening, and I inform at a macro level the outlook, keep in mind as you see things that you may be supportive of, or things that you might say, oh, I wish something was different, there's time. The reason you do these studies and long-term financial planning is to inform those financial decisions. So, tonight, I'm not here to, there's no resolution or action item, it's simply to inform, given certain assumptions at a point in time, what those rates and revenue sufficiency would look like. And Sarah, I guess I'll point to you if you can go to the next slide, so, um... Yeah, it looks like the, um, maybe it was the way that it's printed, and, and I can keep going as you look at that.
I'm not sure, that's true.
Nope.
That's weird, oh, we'll keep going, um, we, we're good, so if you can go to the second slide, we'll...
I think it's backwards.
The words on the page are fine, though, even though it says conclusions and recommendations. So, again, those comments that I made on revenue sufficiency and utility rate adjustments or fee increases, and when I refer to revenue sufficiency, and if you have a chance to look at the report, it covers this in more detail, it is what level of cash balances are necessary in order to meet defined objectives? Both, um, for cash, and then is the revenue sufficient to cover plant, to support operations? CFP stands for capital improvement, debt service, capital acquisition, and to provide some contingency for unforeseen events. The other, uh, portion after identifying what that revenue sufficiency needs to be, what would be the proposed rates to achieve that revenue sufficiency? For purposes of the study and, and working with staff, note that we did not make any assumptions from future development, and that is a conservative assumption for the plan. So the extent that there's new customers to the utility that would provide additional revenue that is not included in the plan, that was purposeful in order to be conservative in those assumptions. If you can go to the next slide? Here's the snapshot, I'll have two slides, this is actually the fee amount, so if you were and you were not adopting a fee schedule based upon your current structure for sewer rates and water, what those proposed future amounts would be? This shows it from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-nine to be a snapshot, the report actually goes out to twenty thirty-five. And to go back to those comments, I realize how difficult it is to do a budget for the upcoming year, let alone the next decade. Again, to my comments, this is meant to be macro, given those assumptions, and when you see proposed rates and the percent changes, that'll come up on the next slide, just know, Northland or I do not stand before you tonight saying, well, these are the rates that you have to adopt for the next decade. No, it's meant to be of this order of magnitude, given the project. If you can go to the next slide, I think this might be more meaningful. So on the sewer side for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, these are annual percent changes, both to the minimum charge for the first two thousand gallons, which is your current structure, and then for above those two thousand gallons. So smaller, more inflationary increases. For water rate, you see larger increases, but after twenty twenty-nine dropped down to more inflationary, and those are, you know, very large increases, and you might say, well, why do you have that level of increase? Again, back to the comment, given the forecast for capital improvement, being on a Pago strategy with the exception of the treatment facility in twenty twenty-eight, which for purposes of the study, we assumed that if the city were to be successful in securing state funds for half of that cost, and then ha, the other, um, approximately seven million on the rate payers, what would rates need to be? Introduction of more bonding would help mitigate those, but that's not consistent with the objective to be Pago. And tonight, you're not being asked to make that decision, but you're being, seeing numbers that show, given the capital improvement plans that were for you, what would those rate increases need to be? If you can go to the next, uh, slide, please. So this is an example, monthly utility fees, and there's, and I realize there's, the numbers are small, but let's just focus on the bottom line. There's a low volume customer sample, medium volume, high volume, for the entire planning period of the study, out to twenty thirty-five. You can see the dollar change there for the low volume, so in twenty twenty-six, and these are monthly, consistent with, it would be a five-dollar increase, seven-dollar increase the following year in twenty seven, and then just under ten in twenty eight. You can see the dollar change for the medium volume for twenty twenty-six, because higher volume, paying more for each volume, unit volume, would be, um, just over fifteen dollars increase. And then for those higher volume users, in this example being ten thousand gallons billed, it's about twenty-six dollars. And these are monthly amounts, consistent with your current billing structure. And again, this study and your staff, it would not be that you go on autopilot with what is in the study, but this will help inform those annual decisions. Different assumptions would produce different results than what you see before you this evening. If you can go to the next slide? So now I'm gonna have a few graphs, so for those that prefer that, rather than all those numbers. So here is a low, that low volume example of two thousand gallons per month. The line is the annual percent change in the combined sanitary and sewer water bill. On the right axis is that percent change. The bars represent the total monthly bill, the green being the water portion of the bill, the blue being the sanitary sewer portion. And you can see that increase projected over the next decade to position the city to Pago strategy in covering those revenue sufficiency items that I mentioned, with the exception of bonding for an assumed portion of the treatment facility cost in twenty twenty-eight. If you can go to the next slide, there's two more slides here, this is the medium volume example of six thousand gallons per month. The, um, yellow line being the annual percent change, so you can see those higher percent changes in the near term, and then a more inflationary assumption, and then the total bill, the combined, uh, two bars. If you can go to the last one, which is a higher volume at that twen, at twenty thousand gallon example here in this slide, and again, same structure, the line is the annual percent change, and then the top of the bar represents an example, um, monthly bill for that customer. If you can go to the next slide, please? So I talked about revenue sufficiency and these objectives, I'm gonna have a slide for water and for sewer, this is the slide for water. The green line represents the desired minimum ending cash position, sufficient to cover three months of operating cash, the following year debt service, where debt service is applicable, as well as Pago capital. And the, um, debt service includes the existing debt outstanding, and then the assumption that there would be bonding for the treatment facility. The difference between the green and the blue line, the blue being the projected ending cash, is the reserves. So reserves begin to narrow in, on a pro forma basis in the twenty-nine range, and begin to widen in the out years. And that has to do that the plan doesn't assume a reduction in rates after they're put in place for the Pago, so there is some buildup of reserve forecasted, and that'll depend on future program, uh, capital to be programmed. This is a very long-term view of it, um, both, we assume some inflationary assumption on current capital, but it would be less conservative to say, well, don't we just need rates that provide us with cash sufficient to cover the bare minimum? but it would be less conservative to say, well, don't we just need rates that provide us with cash sufficient to cover the bare minimum? That's a policy decision of the city council. But most cities choose, because unforeseen things happen, costs rise, to have some difference between the bare minimum and what may be available for reserves or contingency. If you can go to the next slide, please. So this is the water fund, and this just breaks down that look of, so why, why the proposed larger increases? And this is looking at those ending cash balance being the top of the bar, and what would those, would be ending cash balance by year? Why is that projected to be needed? The green is for following year debt service. The yellow is for that three months of operating cash. The orange or the red is for planned capital, and the blue is for future capital and unincined. And I had mentioned in the out years on that last graph where you see it white and more reserves available in the out years. These are projections. Actuals will not look exactly like this. It'll depend on what you actually do in your budget, and what actual project costs come to bear on the utility fund. If you can go to the next slide. So this is the difference between the blue line being revenues and the orange line being expenses. The reason that peak in 2028 is that's when we're assuming that $7 million of state funding to pay for half of the treatment, the plant project in 2028, and that drops off. In some years, the expense is above the revenue. Expense includes depreciation. We look at that comparison to projected revenue expense, but as importantly, we are looking at that ending cash balance position, and is it providing that revenue sufficiency? If you can go to the next slide. So now we're switching from talking about water to sewer. I'm going to have three charts that are the same as I presented for water. This first one is for the sewer fund, the green line being that desired minimum ending cash position, and the blue line being that projected. The sewer funds have less proposed rate increases. The sewer funds have a healthier balance and a better position for that Pago than the water. So lower increases to sewer help to offset those larger increases that are projected as needed for water. If you can go to the next slide. Same snapshot here. The sewer fund has more current debt service, so that green bar being cash that is needed. And this is conservatively projecting, do you have cash at year end sufficient to cover the following year debt service? So not just the upcoming February, in the following year, but the following year, February and August payments. And yes, it is projected that you will, and do and will have sufficient cash. There is some planned capital, there is no bonding assumed in the plan for sewer. So again, that's a policy decision that would incur additional debt, would provide some relief for that Pago strategy. But as assumed, the model and the plan was put together, the idea that the city desires to be, have a Pago strategy when possible. If you can go to the next slide. Here you see the difference between expenses and revenue. The reason that the expense line, and it widens in the out years, is it to drop, decline in that interest expense? So the principal payments are reduction in the liability, but the interest expense on that debt shows up as an expense. That's why you see that difference in the out years. If you can go to the next slide, please. So now I'm going to have a few slides that show debt outstanding from the utility, supported by utility revenues. The blue is existing debt. This doesn't include yet what you just, your action that you took a short while ago on those bonds. So this is, that would not be under system. The plan, new debt, is that forecasted debt, new debt issuance in the model. If you can go to the next slide. This is total annual debt service, the blue being existing debt, and it's annual debt service supported by revenues from the utility. So this does not include any debt that would be outstanding, supported by tax levels. The green is that planned new debt. So this debt service means annual principal and interest payments. That's what this chart is showing. And that increase, that large increase relates to the assumption for treatment and the bonds being issued in 2028. That is an assumption. The exact project cost, the timing, and whether or not you would be successful in securing half of that project, estimated project cost, all of those are unknowns at this time. If you can go to the next slide. So the utility funds are in sound financial condition. I am not here before you tonight that you're, you know, in a hole that you're trying to figure out. This is long-term planning to ensure that those funds continue to remain in sound financial condition. The increases to fees charged for water and sewer are necessary, in our opinion, to maintain that revenue sufficiency for those services. Whether they will be at those exact amounts presented, probably not. In that order of magnitude, based upon these assumptions, yes. Bonding for capital improvements would help to minimize the fee increases that will otherwise be needed, but that would mean incurring more debt burden for the city and the interest expense related to that. If you can go to the next slide, we should be at the end here. So with that, I will conclude my remarks. That was a very brief summary of a approximate 40-page report, if you've had a chance to look at it. Mayor Council, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Yes.
One, Tammy. I thought we made an assumption, did we put in like around the 700,000 of, we still have to go on to the loan? Would that have been in your chart?
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
So with the PFA loans, that we'd be the assumption that in this current year, 2025, that there will be just, I say just because there was more room, another 700,000 that will be drawn on that to support...
So we're close to finalizing that number, but I just want to make sure we did put in some, because we knew there was some pay apps and stuff that would be coming forward. Okay. Thank you.
To piggyback off that, the Northside project is not included in, in this?
No, the Northside project, we do have some assumptions in there.
The Northside one is...
The one that's currently going on.
The current.
Yeah. What I meant by that is because those bonds were just issued this morning, we didn't have that specific. They weren't outstanding at the point that we did the study.
Okay.
But we have included them as part of our utility revenue analysis for the, they have been, they've been on the CIP for...
Right. Okay. Thank you, Tammy. That was informational. Thank you for emphasizing the fact that this is for planning purposes only, not meant to be something we ought to do or need to do. With regards to, you know, one thing that I wanted to maybe get from this report was what a tiered approach would look like versus our current minimum water, the 2,000 gallons. Is that something that you see or have seen? Or is there a way for us to understand what that could look like if we went to a 2.34 or 2.46?
I can speak to that. So the plan assumes the current structure stays in place. With going to a tier structure, that does not, depending on your actions, produce more revenue, because we've identified what revenue sufficiency is needed. Going to a tier would change the pie. Who's paying that? So it could put more pressure on higher users compared to lower users, but it wouldn't change and builds up more cash, because again, the objective being, what is the revenue that's needed in order for the revenue sufficiency, and what do those rates need to be? So if you change your structure, it changes the pie of who is, who is paying those fees.
Right. And we have a, we don't have a lot of data yet with our new software to really help us understand that? If that's even something that's a road worth traveling down?
We struggled with this because we were working in two different systems. And so, and the other thing we struggle with is, is the variations of seasons, like it's wet this spring. So we just, you know, sent out bills, and we see summer is completely different, based on how much rain we get. But I think if we had more data, that's something we could look at. And we talked a bit about that in our discussion as well. I think it's important for the council to kind of set, give us some direction as to, you know, is it going to be for commercial, is it going to be for residential, and what those tiers look like? Because there are a lot of different variables. We have a lot of different residents in different situations, commercial, you know, and so forth. But definitely something we could do, I think we talked a little bit about that. If we wanted to go back and look at a certain piece, we could do that.
That is correct. And in Northland, having done a lot of these studies for many different cities across the state, when you look at significant changes to your structure and tiers, you really want to model that at a granular level and understand, what does that mean to different customers? So you don't get surprised when you change those tiers, and not understanding how many customers are actually going to fall in that for two reasons. One, you don't want to surprise customers with the impact without informing them first. And as importantly, you want to ensure when you change that tier structure, that you're still producing the revenue that you need in order for the fund to maintain that revenue sufficiency. So yes, we did talk about it. The challenge is, at this point, the city just doesn't, may soon have the ability at that detailed level by customer.
Sure.
The other thing I want to mention that you talked about, we, we made no assumption, we assume no development fees, like those wax, sack, trunk. Our schedule is very outdated, but we are getting a lot of requests with our developments to waive those fees and certain things. So we want to be very careful about how much revenue we assume, because that can, you know, make a big difference if we're not collecting adequate user fees from other places, and expecting 100,000 to come in here, and it doesn't, you know. But that's also something that we could look at. Maybe there is still some fees that we collect, but it looks a little different. You know, I don't know what that's going to be. And that, I think in the memo I talked about, maybe there's a way to look at setting that money aside for additional extensions, or, you know, purposing that money instead of as part of the general operating, as part of maybe more the capital or extensions in the future.
You mentioned the comment on residential and commercial. The model was based off of including commercial?
Yeah.
And your question for guidance is whether or not specifically tiered approach for residential and commercial, or just...
Well, and the reason, sometimes you can do tiers differently. I just think it's important to consider all the factors. You go to what industry in town, how much is that going to cost them? You know, how many, how much are they paying in property taxes? You know, you, you have different factors of what people are paying for all sorts of different services. And so I think it's, you have to be careful on how we implement all of that, if that's the route we go.
Sure.
The same could be said with, I think you and I had the discussion about families that, you know, use less than 2,000 gallons of water a month versus families that use 8,000, depending on their size and their lifestyles. But they, you know, their water needs for their basic living could be different.
And to point out too, this modeling did not factor in any growth of the city as far as residential users or commercial, additional commercial users?
Mayor, both, you are correct in your statement, but not just the operating revenue from those potential new users. There was no assumption on trunk collection.
And the trunk collection. Just...
Kind of the worst-case scenario.
Right. Again, conservative. Curious, just on your comments being, doing what you do, do you see a lot of cities doing more of a model like we have, or more of a tiered approach, or is it a mixed bag?
The city of your size, your fee structure is very similar to other cities. I think the challenge that cities have is, is you move into those multiple tiers. One, it can become more expensive administratively, just the billing process and dealing with questions. Two, it's always that first step of doing it to make sure that you did it right, back to my earlier comments, that you don't get surprised as to how you're impacting different customers.
Good. Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions for Tammy?
You asked my question, so...
Well, it's a good report.
Yeah.
I appreciated seeing, you know, what things could look like, and for us to have, you know, true financial insight onto big projects that we have upcoming, and how that impacts overall the taxpayers, so...
On a positive note, the sewer fund, you know, we made it there. We made it.
Now we just need to worry about inflationary.
Yep.
At this point, which is standard, so...
You know, that's, that's one thing that, yes, we do, we did get to that point where we're in a good position on that fund.
Right. Yeah. Good.
Mayor Council, so informational, there's no action required by the city council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to leave.
Thank you. Great. Okay, we'll move on to item number nine, the EDA report. The Downtown Fassad Grant Program Application. Consider an approved EDA recommendation on downtown facade program currently out of funds. Now, I will say that's both a good thing and a bad thing. So... Did the EDA, they had a...
We had a meeting before our council meeting, and we did approve of the $5,000 request from Ryan Schmidt for Brew Gems. He is willing to wait. The contingency is if we want to fund this for next year. As we know, his door is broke, and the door and window wasn't typically part of the facade, but this day and age, if you put a new door and a new window in, you're going to notice the difference. Along with the, your comment was maybe an awning out in front. He doesn't have a problem doing that. So, but the issue is that we currently don't have the money. In fact, we're in a hole on this. So moving forward, he would be willing to wait till next year to, he needs to do his door right away. And we felt as though he doesn't have to reapply for the other half of the 5,000, provided that we put it into budget for next year.
That we actually refund the bucket.
So essentially, we're saying contingent on the council refunding it, his reimbursement would be then processed in 2026.
Okay. And he, were they going to look at and do anything more than just the window and door? Were they looking at painting and...
Yeah, awning.
Awning signs, whatever?
Yep, I think.
Okay. Okay.
So we make, we recommend that, you know, he moves forward with it, with the grant. On that contingency that we funded for next year.
It's been a very successful program.
Very.
I think, I would hope that everyone notices the difference of what downtown is looking like, and we're continuing to improve and revitalize the look and feel of downtown. That's just one small step towards what we need to do to, to get more going on downtown. But we're seeing buildings being purchased and rehabbed well above and beyond the simple $5,000 that we're helping them with. So...
Can I just add? We have figured it's about 100, we're over 120,000 in private investment. But with this one, would it be 100? It'd be over 120 with this one?
Of private investment?
Of private investment. For our 40, what do we have, 47?
Yeah. It was, it was zero dollars every year for many years prior to that, so... So do we need to action on, do we need to action on anything, or is it something we just discuss at budget time?
Well, if you, if you want to give him the go-ahead, I can amend the grant agreement to state, to state only, you know, we'd reimburse you if funds are available and budgeted for in 2026. I can make that note on there. And it's kind of a risk for him, too, but I think he needs to do the doors as part of the issue, either way. And that's why he said he was okay with waiting.
Sure. I have, I'm a huge proponent of the program. I mean, I brought this back prior to me even being on council. So I'm in, I'm for funding the bucket again. I'm not looking for an action necessarily, but is there anyone opposed to it? That, that we don't think that we would fund it again?
Well, my opinion is we should fund it. I mean, the overall impact that it's had so far is phenomenal.
I agree.
Okay. I mean, I think it's something that...
Guarantee.
Yeah. I mean, it's something we all feel comfortable about, and certainly we'll then talk about it at budget, unless something changes. We're for it as of now. Is that okay?
Yeah, that, that's fine. I just, you need to act if you, you need to act on the application.
We do. So we need to actually approve, or a motion?
Prove or deny, or hold, whatever.
Motion?
Yep.
Okay.
You, you need to approve the application.
Sure.
I made the motion, and we approved the application for the facade program for Ryan Schmidt.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number ten, department reports. Katie, Chief Katie McMillan.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll first start with our stat report. We had four hundred and forty-five calls for service in the month of June. That is up from last year. I did not get that number, but I believe it was four hundred and twenty-six last year. As you can see, equipment violations are up. A lot of that is, your comment headlights, taillights, but a lot of, also we started cracking down on the window tint. That is too dark. Driving without a valid license is up. Medicals and welfare checks, domestics, those are all increased. And you can also see that the parking tickets section increased. That is, for we received a few complaints on the forty-eight parking over here on John and Broadway. We received complaints of people parking there exceeding that forty-eight hours. So we have now started cracking down on that enforcement as well. So that is seen in that number there. We have ordinance enforcement continues. Sadly, I think some people don't mow their lawn until they receive my letter. So that's very frustrating. If you're, please mow, mow your lawn and pick up the items around your house. The next step is attorney's not here tonight, but to talk to you guys about, there's a few that are just ignoring any letters or knocking on our door, talking to them. They're not doing any improvement. So after I talk with Sarah too, we're going to be bringing it forward for council's decision on what to do with these few individuals, so. On nuisance, yep. Nuisance violations, miscellaneous, we got expired tabs on vehicles, inoperable vehicles, mattresses, just stuff.
I mean, in the interest of saving time, are you comfortable with us moving forward with prosecution? Or do you want specific details and addresses?
Are they, are they, have you had conversations with them?
Yes.
Oh, multiple letters.
Multiple.
Like physical conversations?
Yes. And every, and the one address in particular, it's a yearly thing. Every year that the same issue arises. And it's excuses after excuses.
It, it's fine if you don't, the only reason I ask is it's going to sit another month and we'll probably get, you know, another set of complaints and people calling in on it. So it's up to you. Just-
My personal belief is we've reached the point, we have to deal with it. It's becoming, you drive by and you see garbage and they're not paying attention. And it's time.
I mean, if you want to have a discussion with me afterwards, I can let you know what address in particular and maybe you can work your magic, but I know they avoid other council members.
I was thinking, I was thinking that, you know, what, what would happen if, you know, we went and tried another time? I go along, I'd be, I'd be willing to speak with folks and see what it is or what's the, what, what's going on or what's the holdup. If there's any additional assistance they need or what truly is the problem. And if we can find a solution, great. If, if that's been exhausted, then unfortunately, it is what it is.
Yeah, we can meet up afterwards too. And I know they have avoided other council members. They just don't answer the door too, so.
That's fine. At least then I can say I tried and offered assistance to see what other opportunities are out there for them to, to get what they need, the help they need. And if, and if it doesn't work, then we, we move on, so.
So let me throw this out there, Mr. Mayor. What if you don't, they've been avoiding me. And so what if you don't make contact with them? I think, I think it's time. I mean, we've had plenty of opportunity. We spend, we spend money for a cleanup day and then Benton County spends money for a cleanup day and they don't take advantage of it and they just blow us off. And we also have, as far as our vehicle ordinance, they're not doing anything with the vehicles. And the people that, it's not fair to the neighbors to have to look at that all the time. When you're ignoring us, I, I think they've ignored us enough. I think the time is over for talking and I have no problem going after them. Unfortunately, it's going to cost money, but there again, we've done it with other people that disobeyed our ordinances. I'm fed up with them. Enough is enough.
Is it, it would be okay to say that it seems to be the exact same people that we're having issues with year over year? Or do we have anyone that we could speak with? Is there a chance?
There's one that I have been working with them for probably over two summers now. And this other one is here, it's, I mean, it goes blue.
If, so is it two?
For sure, two. There's one we could possibly work with, but they're, they're new to the violation list this year, so.
You're on board?
Two in particular?
Yeah.
Enough is enough.
Okay.
Especially when you go there and they're avoiding you, okay? They just will not answer the door. And the other one, you always get excuses about why it's not happening and this and that, and nothing is getting done. So if you want to try it one more time, Mayor, I'd be on board with it. But after that, I mean, it's done and it happens right away. Not thirty days.
I was going to say, can we, can I make an attempt? And then if it's, if it truly is, that's it, then we just move to prosecution?
Yeah, because it does take some time to do that too as well because usually it starts with a letter and then we move to the next step. You know, we, we try to get them to take us seriously through legal, the attorney sending letters.
Right.
And then we move to the, it doesn't, we don't usually jump in right away. We try to get them to realize, hey, we're moving forward with this now, so.
So let's look at, let's look at connecting.
Okay.
I'd be willing to, whatever, the next twenty-four, forty-eight hours, whatever it is, we'll just boom, boom, boom. And if, and if it feels all hope is lost, we move right into prosecution.
I would agree to that.
That, can we do that? Can we agree to that?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
I have one thing to say. We are thumbing our nose at people who get the letter and take care of it. We are ignoring those people who get a letter and take care of it. These people are saying, take a leap. They don't deserve any more time.
And you're probably right.
I-
But I want to see it for myself.
Well, I wish you lived in one of the neighborhoods. I wish you did. I wish you had even the, the ones who don't do it all the time. It's a pain in the ass. I'm sorry. That's reality. If, if we're all keeping our houses and yards decent, there's no excuse because we help and we help and we talk and we talk. And you've been out there working your butt off. I'm paying a girl twenty-five dollars every time she mows my black backyard because I physically cannot. It pisses me off. The people that are fully capable and they're just saying, no, don't want to.
Well, then it sounds like they'll get what's coming. So.
So just to clarify, we'll give you a couple of days and then we'll immediately follow up. There's consensus to follow up if we can't get anywhere.
Yep.
That's good enough. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go with you. Do you make these contacts?
Are you available during the day?
I'll make it.
Okay. All right. So, yeah, let's, let's touch base then, us, and we can, we can figure it out.
Okay. And then I have fully fund days. We only had a few minor calls that were out of our ordinary calls. But other than that, it went well. We had a hundred and thirty-five kids attend the bike rodeo. So that was a very well received. And thank you to everyone who helped with that. I very much appreciate it. And up in the consent agenda, we approved the hiring of the two part-time officers contingent on their background. I'm hoping that process will be done by mid-September and then they can get into field training so we have more coverage coming for the winter months. And then I sent out emails to, or email out to everyone, just letting you know, our twenty-one squad car is down again. In 2023, I believe, is when we had the transmission replaced along with the cam shaft and the lifters. Yesterday morning, I went to start it and weird noise coming from another engine. Well, cam shaft is out, or lifter is out in the cam shaft is what Murphy Chevrolet told me. And since it's past the warranty, yes, when we got it replaced the first time, that was under warranty. But now that it went out again, there's no warranty on it. So then it would ballpark figure to fix it would be seventy-five hundred to ten grand. This squad, this squad car is on the CIP to get replaced next year. So I guess I don't know how that would affect the resale value if we don't fix it or if we don't fix it, it has to sit and then we use the spare squad, which I mean, it's, the spare squad is, I'm just always concerned for like long travels with the spare squad because we purchase it for the spare.
Okay. So we're, so we're six months away from the new year. So there's opportunity to look at the CIP and pulling, maybe even ordering the car because it took quite a while to get the last squad.
And I did email on where we got our last squad and seeing what a timeframe would look like if we had to get it now. That, that was before I even talked to Murphy Chev of what the condition is. And I have not gotten back from them.
Yeah.
Murphy Chev said they do have the cam shaft and lifter in stock and they hope it's one that would fit a police pursuit Tahoe, but he wasn't a hundred percent sure.
If we're, if we're looking at sunsetting it in six to nine months, I don't know why we'd put, I don't know, even a thousand dollars into it if we didn't need to. We have a spare squad for purposes of if something were to go wrong, we have a backup. We have a backup. If we need to use it long-term, that doesn't seem unreasonable. And we look at CIP and whether or not we can at least place the order. Maybe we have to write a small check and then twenty-six comes sooner than you think and we pay for the rest.
I, perhaps can we get, I mean, the spare squad could get us through till next meeting if we came back with options.
Yep. And if, I was looking at trying to get over to K and K to, to have them do a really good check over on everything too, to maybe that'll help with my weariness though, if they'll make it through the six to nine months, but, so. Yeah, I mean, I think-
I mean, whether we spend the money next year or this year, I, I mean, it's money that's going to be spent.
It is on the schedule, I believe.
For next year.
Yeah. So maybe if you can get some options in here back from that rapper, where, where I'm assuming we're looking at a Durango again?
Yes, that, I just took the numbers that we took from the first one. The Durango is the cheapest. That's what I would stick with to help for taxpayer base.
I think what, the direction is the council doesn't want to spend ten thousand dollars
Not until we, not until we look at other options, right?
Yeah. Okay. So I think we limp by with the spare.
Okay.
And then we'll bring some options back in August. Probably what our best option is.
Yeah. I mean, maybe if it was a thousand dollars, fix it and move on. But, but if it could be up to ten thousand dollars, I, I don't know why we would do that just to turn around and sell it.
Okay. Yeah, I was just bringing, I wanted direction, so.
That's my, I mean, that's just my opinion. I mean-
With that kind of money in it, we better drive it a while.
Right, right. I mean, if we're, if it was three years out for a new squad, totally different story.
Well, and, and we just, we've had so many issues with the, that-
With this squad car, yeah.
That, that's just, this has been a tough-
Cars are fun.
Brand of car.
Yep. Cars are, cars are cars. Okay. So does that help with giving you guidance on what to do next?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Excellent.
That's all I have unless you have something for me.
Fund days went off really well. I love seeing everyone out. The five K, I mean, I think that was the most support we've had, helping protect the littles during their kid case. So thank you for that. And, and again, just, you know, enjoy the officers running around with, you know, popsicles or whatever it is, right? That means it's the stickers, it's the popsicles. It's like, it's the getting out and just hanging out with the kids. You know, much appreciated. Something we should, you know, all be appreciative of, being in a small town like this, that we can, we have those opportunities. So thank you.
And also, yes. And also a huge thank you to Public Works. They load the trailer for me for the bike rodeo every year. That saves a lot of work for me. I do appreciate that, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forty bicycles.
Forty bikes this year. Whew. All right. Thank you. Moving on to city engineer Jared Griffith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight in your packet, we have a, our first pay-up for the north side improvements to, for your consideration. And I will follow that up with the project update on how we're doing on the north side and then also the lead service project. But coming back to the pay-up, pay-up number one for our north side improvements, we have here tonight for your consideration is a amount request of three hundred and eleven thousand, eight, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-two cents. This pay-up will cover essentially the quantity cutoff date was June thirteenth, so a while back ago. At that time, what we had completed on the project was basically the tree removals, street, the two missed service removals. And then they had completed the first stretch of Fourth Avenue's would have been a water main casing underneath the highway. So that's what's included in this pay-up. Since then, we've had, we've basically completed all the, the crossing on, on Fourth Avenue. And then they jumped over to Third Avenue. Today, they actually broke through on the receiving pit for their casing. So that should be wrapping up here probably by the end of the week. And that should be, that subcontractor should be pretty much done with, with, with their work on the project. And next week after that, Keegley, Keegley will be on site, the prime contractor, starting their underground work on Fourth Avenue, south of the highway, finishing that up and then jumping over to the south side of the highway on Third Avenue. That's kind of like the look ahead for the next couple of weeks. So, except with that, for your consideration tonight, pay-up number one for our north side improvements projects.
I'll make a motion to approve pay application number one for three hundred and eleven thousand, one eighty-five and forty-two cents.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Jared?
Yep.
What, with all the rain, are they behind schedule right now?
Uh, great question. With all the rain, technically, they are behind for their schedule they, they submitted. Now, that schedule does have some built-in rain days to it. Now they're not built in to all happen in the first couple of weeks of the project. They are going to build in throughout the whole project. So technically, they are kind of behind, but they, as we progress, they will catch up. Contractor hasn't indicated any concern at this moment with where we're at. I, I think we're, we're sitting okay right now too. So if we keep continuing to get the rain that we've received the last two, three weeks, then we can have a different discussion then. But as of right now, I think we're sitting okay.
This has nothing to do with that part, but I want to know, did you look at the placemat and the actual alley behind the people on the east side of Broadway Avenue? Did you check and make sure we can use that parking?
No.
See, I can't quite picture how I'm going to climb over and put deep dent because there is no way where I live on Broadway Avenue North. I have to park a quarter of, well, no, this is exaggeration probably, a quarter of a mile away. Or in a church parking lot or the school parking lot. I'm seventy-five. You going to come and take my groceries out of my truck, bring them to my house? Where the heck am I supposed to park? And other people in this room who are on Broadway, that, that alley is not an alley. You know that, Mark. You've seen it. It goes, the pavement goes up to past one house, maybe two. And then it's trees and it's stuff that needs to be cut and cleaned. I don't want my truck looking like it went through the woods. I'm sorry. I don't. It's not, it's not pretty.
Construction never is.
I'm not, I don't care about the, I'm willing to work with the construction. I'm saying, you're telling people where to park and they couldn't park there if their life depended on it. I can't park reasonable to my house.
Today?
Today I can park in my driveway. When they get on Broadway Avenue, guess what? I am parking in my driveway and you can't come down that- I am parking in my driveway and you can't come down that alley to my house to park. And where am I supposed to go reasonably?
Yes, to answer that question, um, most of the project, um, you will be able to access your driveway. Um, at the end, at the morning, at the end of the day, you should be able to access your driveway. There'll be, there'll be durations where, uh, when we pour the apron in the sidewalk in front of your driveway, like that stretch where you have a seven-day window that you can't drive over it and that's, that's maybe a, a long-term impact to you when you're parking. Um, but for most of the project, now we will be able to access your driveway throughout, you know, throughout the project.
There isn't water and sewer going down the middle of Broadway?
Yep, there is, but at, that's what I mean by at, at the end of the day, you'll have access to your driveway. So if there are intermediate, you know, appointments you need to do throughout the day, that you need to go to, then yes, we'll have to have some parking on the side streets or in most cases, people can use alleys. Um, but as far as construction goes, that's, that's kind of the game plan we have. We'll move forward as far as parking goes. Um, if you, for those out there, not just, not just you, but those out there that need assistance, um, our, our staff on site and then also the contractor are willing to help with what we need to as far as to making sure we have access to the residence.
Oh, when I see it.
Okay, moving on.
Oh, motion is seconded.
Yep. Nope, nothing. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. And then did you have additional updates, right?
Yeah, just, just the, my, uh, the lead service project, uh, we did have our, our, um, pre-construction meeting today. Uh, they're planning to start this week as well, um, and they're, all those services are in our same project limits. Um, they will be starting, I believe, on fourth avenue and kind of working ahead of Keighley. That's kind of their game plan for the time being. Uh, sorry, I said third, I said four, I meant third, sorry. Um, kind of working ahead, we're working ahead of Keighley. Um, and so far, so good as far as the coordination between, between the two contractors. And so they seem to be playing well the other in the same sandbox, so that's good. Any questions on the lead service project? Okay, that is all I have tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Moving on to Public Works and Fire, Mark Pepinovas.
Good evening, not a lot. In the package, we've talked for years at the fire about a side-by-side. It was funding the whole time. We use it probably, it varies. We might use it never and we might use it a couple, two, three times a year. This one came available, came from out west, DNR gets them and, uh, talked about it at the fire level, at the relief level. And we put up some stuff on the back, like to build a hauler backboard. They found us a trailer actually, that was our biggest concern. We'd like to buy it for the price in the minutes or the agenda, what is it, forty-five hundred? And sixteen fifty, right, forty-nine fifty? I apologize, it's not in my.
Four, roughly forty-five hundred.
Yeah, there's a solid price. The relief would pay a hundred percent of that back to the city after we, uh, get it here. We don't have the, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't a budget. We're required to keep it three years. If it doesn't work out at that time, we would dump it. If not, then someday, you know, we would, years down, we'd look at.
Is it possible that it would replace the K five?
No. This will not go through near what that is.
Well, it doesn't sound like that does solid time either.
What's that?
It doesn't sound like that does all the time either.
Well, yeah, this one's, yeah, no, definitely would not be the plan. We're still working with the DNR on a new J five. Might have something by the end of the year. I don't know on that, but. So we'd have the insurance and the storage issues would be the two. It's gonna get tight out there. We have a new truck coming in two weeks, so. With that, if it's good, I'd like permission to purchase this and then, um, money would be reimbursed to, city would pay for it like always and then be reimbursed. I'm just looking up the number if you want to.
So, well, the, it's, it's a little bit forty-five hundred on.
Yeah, but we have an exact number, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
So.
Any comments or discussion about that or?
It's one nineteen fifty for the trailer and forty-five hundred, sixty-four fifty for everything. I was, multiple emails going, so. The trailer was completely gone through, new, uh, new wiring lights, tires, everything. They went through it completely, so.
So do we need a motion or just our, our approval?
You, you need a motion to purchase because by, we're also then, even if they reimburse us, we're still on the hook for insurance and storage.
So you're gonna be putting other things on this too?
Far as.
Like a tank or?
We don't, I don't know what we're gonna do on the tank side. It's from the rural fire program, so we're supposed to make it, be able to utilize it for grass fires. The biggest thing is more so personnel transport and backboards, hauling, uh, backboard from a remote area. The two we had last year was a missing person up in Morrison County. We commandeered, uh, Morrison County Sheriff's Department. And we took a private one out of Foley and, uh, we had the one in hunting accident. We got, uh, Malacca Fire came and helped us. So we do use it. Have we used it yet this year? No, we wouldn't have, so. You know, I mean, it would be something like a Fun Days or something like that. It'd be a benefit, you know, event like that.
We got room for it down there?
I say, it's gonna make things tight for a while. You know, yeah, with that extra truck we're gonna have till. Stuff will be doubled. Anyhow.
I'll, uh, sixty-four fifty, I'll make a motion to approve the sixty-four fifty for the purchase of the side-by-side and trailer for the Foley Fire Department.
I'll second that.
And it's a reimbursement from.
Fire safety leave. With reimbursement from the fire firefighters relief association. All right, uh, motions are made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Well, hopefully you don't have to use it.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's like insurance. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Mark?
On that, you know, I think where Public Works has been and Fire, other new truck is coming two weeks, seventeenth, or whatever that is, new tanker.
So you're gonna push that one in?
Yeah.
Exciting. Uh, well, uh, thank you for a successful, um, fully Fun Days. I know it took a lot to get things caught up and you guys put a lot of hours into helping work, uh, and getting the wastewater line going again. I know, I, I don't think you slept for one day, um, so appreciate that. Um, I'm glad it's, glad, glad things are back up and running, uh, the way that we knew they would and.
Hope we're there. Thank you.
Yep, so.
Public Works did a great job getting up, uh, at four o'clock in the morning. You can barely tell that.
The guys did, yeah. I'll be honest, I wasn't up the whole night that night just because of their stuff and they, uh,
They did a great job.
Yep, I'll let them know. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Mark. Uh, moving on then to administration, Sarah Braun.
Uh, yes, I have one item on the agenda and that is a, um, proposal for Conlin. Um, we put in money into the CIP, um, two years ago, um, for a remodel. We actually scaled down the project quite a bit, um, because that was the same time we were looking at the county building and some of those different things. So this is just, um, to add one office, um, which we think is going to, would give us, get us by for quite a few years. So that we could focus then on, um, maybe long-term, we, we may do something else, but that's probably a little further down the road and maybe we don't need to spend that much money on an internal remodel. So, um, this is under, at first it wasn't under, um, but just with some of the, what's going on in the, I think, the bidding environment. Um, we've kind of been working on this for probably almost a year now. Um, Conlin was able to get it under. I think they're a little slow. Um, they actually built our initial city hall. So they know our city hall. The main guy that actually worked on our city hall still involved. Um, so I'm just requesting approval. Um, we allocated a hundred thousand in the CIP a couple of years ago. Um, but we, we're only gonna do just this down-scale project if the council approves it, um, and this would be for the accountant.
Do you have a rendering or design or plans of what?
Do you know, um, no, I don't have the, it's, it's literally, you know where the storage closet is? It's literally like turning that this way and making it an office that faces that way, that way. It is not very big of a change.
Will the storage closet still be there?
No.
Oh.
So when we did the records retention, we've gotten rid of a lot of like our hard copies because of the scanning. And so it is basically taking that storage closet and just revamping the walls and the door to make it an office. But there's a little bit of mechanical that needs to be done, you know, some carpet and, you know, some things above. That's why it's not just as simple as Public Works knocking a wall and, um, moving on. So, no, I don't have a rendering per se. I, I know I have one.
But.
In my email, but not with me in the packet. Um, if you want to stop in, I can certainly show you. It's, it's pretty simple, but. And it's really just to, we have three people up in that front. It's to move the accountant into an office. Um, so there's not, I mean, because you can have two people on the phone, one person on the counter, it gets really loud. Um, traffic, you know, people coming into the library. It is one of the concerns of our employees, you know, just the noise and not being able to focus and on work and so forth, so. So I guess if, any questions? It does not, um, it's, it's under twenty-five thousand, so, um, it does not require a bid process. Um, and like I said, it's, they've done our, um, handicap door, they did our window. Um, Conlin has done a number of little projects for us and they're, they're easy to work with just because they know the building.
It's only worth staying.
Are you sure you're gonna gain everything that you need? I don't want you to get by. You've been, you waited long enough to move, um, with what we need, so.
I don't, I don't feel comfortable spending that much money. If we have a need to, like the library has some space needs, there's other needs. I think this will serve our purpose very well for quite a long time. Um, is it perfect? Well, of course, everybody wants more. Um, this is enough for now. Um, we can spread out a little bit more, give each other a little bit more space and noise protection, I guess. And I think it will serve us well.
I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure you get what you.
Well, the whole thing could be reconfigured, but we're looking at a well over a hundred thousand. And what if then in ten years, you know, there's a opportunity to buy a building and expand the whole city hall footprint that would serve the whole police, everybody, you know? Because it's not just city hall. Police, public works, everybody has needs. We're just trying to find a, a solution that will, you know, make it a lot more comfortable for now.
With everything said, I approve it, please. Go ahead with your request.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
And do not be surprised if it happens pretty quick because I think they have an opening in their schedule, so. Like I said, we've been talking about it for a year, but the numbers weren't really working out and so now they're working out better.
All right.
I don't really have anything else besides, you know, we're just working on, we're starting budget and we'll see that, you know, soon here. We're setting up our meetings with the department heads and we'll get rolling on that. Um, I guess with the rate study, exactly how you and Tammy presented it, um, that's information for you to absorb. Give that some thought. We'll have some discussions at our workshop, you know, on what, what's reasonable or feasible for us as a city, so. If you have any other ideas, things you want us to look into, let me know. Um, but, you know, we'll, we'll, I guess, shift gears into that in no time here because it's already July.
Yeah, next month, so.
So the plan is to have you, um, you, you should have a rough draft budget at your August meeting. That's always our goal. Give you two weeks. We have the workshop. Um, we can have another one if we need to, um, but we, we try to give you a framework. We still know there's some variables like paid family leave. Um, we know, I, I don't know if I mentioned, we had our insurance appraisal this year. Um, our building appraisals, very different than what they were, just, you know, with the cost of everything. So we're gonna have to, um, you know, look at some deductible and some different things for that, just like everybody's insurance is going.
Everything's up.
Those are probably the, the challenges I'm most concerned about are some of those insurance and benefit costs and employee costs. So, but, more to come. Unless you have questions for me?
Good, well, thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, old business discussion on the housing proposal. Uh, Sarah, did you have comments on that beyond what you had sent out?
Um, no. The only thing I did send it to our staff too, um, that, you know, that we've had involved with that. Um, it's down, it's scaled down. Um, just so everybody's clear, uh, they wanted to do a market rate study, but they wanted us to pay for it, which would have been another investment and we just had one done. So we sent them that information and said, hey, you know, we just paid for a housing study. Um, this, you know, utilize this, um, and that's when we got the response back with the scaled down version.
That was what, was it two hundred units approximately? Three hundred, three hundred units?
Still three hundred, is that what?
Yeah, I would say it was still, I mean, not outrageous, but, I mean, what was the original one? Wasn't it a thousand? Or something? Five something? It was lofty.
And as, they are willing to sit down and, and discuss the financing if that's something you want to do. The attorney did look at it, still has some questions, concerns.
So would they still be looking to us to invest upfront in anything?
No, um, I said, no, we would not be putting another thirty, forty thousand.
Right. So the next step after that then was to have actually like the accountant, you know, or even, you know, you said, come, come out and physically look at the, the area, the space?
Is that, and I saw, is the council on board with that? Like, are there still reservations about it? Because I, I also, I just want to make sure whatever we're doing, we're, we're going to do it efficiently and we move forward because we still have this time ticking when that infrastructure, you know, that stuff needs to be decided and put in.
I mean, just throwing it out there, if we rejected the proposal, would we be able to just go for RFP again? I mean, is there a limit on how many times, how many times you can do it or?
I, I just.
How else can we go about it? Because that's the first, this way is not working.
The, the only other option I think we could look at is if we, we look at putting in the infrastructure ourselves and creating, it's, it's not the preferred method, but I know we were just at conference and a lot of cities are doing it because they just are having a hard time finding developers.
So that would mean that we'd have to adopt a layout of what we're looking at?
We have a layout.
Well, we have a couple.
Do we see how far we can go with the resources we have? I don't, I'm, I'm.
Right.
Just talking. I, I'm just concerned we go down this, we keep going, we keep going and all of a sudden in the last hour, we have no options left when it doesn't work out.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm okay not moving forward with this proposal. I don't think it's the right, we're not the right community for what they, I will say specialize in.
This is more designed for a population of twenty, thirty thousand people.
Yeah, it's.
That scares me. They're complex, it's a building. It's neat.
I mean, I like, I like everything about it.
Are we being, in a film lab?
I just don't know the reality.
I just feel it's not ready for fully.
Residents.
Too big. It's still too big.
Scares me. If they build on demand, I don't have a problem with it. If they come in and put in this whole complex, I think it's got a lot of empty buildings sitting there for some time. I don't know, didn't like that.
Do you want me to see how far we could go with the resources we have?
As far as what we could build out ourselves?
Yeah. It is an ideal. I, I does not, but.
I know, we gotta do something.
Oh, yeah.
I don't think this is the right.
Use it or lose it. Uh, well, yeah.
We already purchased the pipe.
Yep.
We already have that. Um, we have a concept and we would have to go through plating and what, you know, the, some of the bid prices have come down a little bit, so, you know, I don't know how far we could get, but.
And we still have money left?
Yes.
Right.
We have the county allocation.
Yep.
Even if it was as simple as, okay, we have this, this money, this pipe, how far can we go? You know, I, I don't know exactly how that looks. I probably would lean on engineering for that a bit, but. Even if it was as simple as, okay, we have this, this money, this pipe, how far can we go, you know, I, I don't know exactly how that looks, I probably would lean on engineering for that a bit, but.
I mean, if we got to a certain point, then, you know. Just hypothetically, if we got to a certain point where it wouldn't take a whole lot more extra for a developer to come in and, we'll say, finish it off and start building homes. Would that be an opportunity for an RFP or would that entice developers more?
I don't know the market that well. I know I heard a lot of it at the league conference, a lot of cities are putting it in, we, we specifically went to a couple of the sessions. And I think it's just because they're, they're in the same boat we are, they just can't get, you know, a lot of options for developers. The other thing that came up, which I thought was interesting is they talked about really thinking about your design standards, like narrowing your streets. You don't need sidewalks on both sides, you know, and they said sometimes they're doing these developments and more affordable housing, maybe developments, but they're, you know, they're. They're keeping them simple and basic.
Yep, smaller lot sizes.
Smaller lot sizes, you know, narrower streets. And then maybe they have their other subdivisions that are more market rated nicer homes and they're doing more fancier things essentially, but. We heard a lot of that, I can't remember what else, definitely.
I, like New Elm said that they were doing like tiny home developments, which, I don't know, I don't know that we have a permanent tiny home market here. But, um, Wilmer was looking at mixed use developments, higher density, single family lots. I don't know, I've got a lot of information from the Saint Peter guy and I got his contact information and I was gonna reach out to him. He had a lot of insight on how Saint Peter was doing it, but they were the ones primarily that said that they are their own developer now. So, it was really interesting though.
I mean, I understand there's the risk of the, the city being the developer, but is there? Is there any opportunity for revenue for the city being the developer?
I, I think we would be hoping to break even, would be the best case scenario, I, I don't know, if you have any thoughts on that, I think break even would be the best case scenario.
So, let's just start with you, would you like to move forward on further discussions with, is it Blue Loft?
Blue Lofts.
Or would you rather have us start looking into what opportunities there are for us, or how far we could get ourselves?
Well, my concern is I do not want to burden other councils down the road with what they plan on doing. There's way too many variables, especially having them in the original plan with their financing, we don't see anything for a few years. So, my feeling is, I do not want to proceed with Blue Lofts at this point.
I am on the same page as Jeff, I think there's too many unknowns and I think that I, they're too big for what we're looking at.
I'm a solid no with Blue Loft.
Okay, I would agree that Blue Lofts may not make sense, or at least their proposal as it, as we sit today.
I'm just gonna throw out a hypothetical and just, so we have not drawn on all of our wastewater loan. Part of it is we have some cash that we were contributing to that project. It's not the most ideal situation, but would we wanna consider if we do need a little extra cash, drawing that wastewater loan down and then submitting some of those expenditures to free up? Some of the cash in the sewer fund, I mean, understand that that's gonna change the, you know, payment plan, but we do, we did budget for some cash, you know, to put into that wastewater project.
And what would that cash be used for?
If we needed additional cash for these lots to put in infrastructure, if we needed some cash.
If we wanted to entertain how far, how far we could go?
You know, we, we didn't turn in all those expenditures on the loan because we had built up some cash. But there's, you know, that's your, I don't know if that's the, what the council would wanna do. It's just, it might be a way for us to access if we needed a, you know, a few hundred thousand, half a million, we, we did, we put in a couple million into that wastewater project. Cause we had that money saved up, but that was for that, you know, always intended for that purpose. And we might be able to draw on some of those expenditures.
I'd like to say in hindsight, the first project we got was the best one we've seen. The one with the, had some Habitat for Humanity, had an apartment. It was not ideal, but we quit working with them. And they seem to have an idea of what our communities need and they've worked with communities like Foley's. To me, they were one I could have supported right off the bat. And it's, maybe it's time to think a little bit like that, or think of, looking at how Mora did their little campus growing out of their town. Checking some of this that's gone on around here, we don't need to reinvent anything.
On that thought though, everything was based on them getting the bonding money and that wasn't guaranteed. So that, that's why we didn't go with that.
It was the, the state money.
Right.
Right.
Yep.
And state handing a lot of money.
Say it wasn't a bad idea, we liked it.
It was, this, both these projects come down to timing.
Yeah.
And I still think they're waiting for, I mean, that money still hasn't been decided yet.
Right, yeah, we, we needed to move quickly, the hopes was for a regular developer to come in and build homes like we see or have seen everywhere else. Something quick, easy, right? And, and we haven't, for whatever reason, haven't, haven't seen that, so, but again, no city has, it is a problem, not only even just around here, state and national level. I mean, I think it'd be at least wise to see what options we could have, I mean, we could also just as easily do phases there as well.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we, we wouldn't be looking at putting water and sewer into the entire thing.
And I would also go back to my couple builders I talked to early on and see if they would possibly commit to lots. You know, like maybe they would say, oh, yeah, I, I'd buy maybe five or whatever, you know, whatever it is, and maybe then if you had some type of arrangement.
Right.
We'd sell them at a, basically a discounted or, you know.
And if we get, and if we get lucky, maybe they're willing to do phase two or three or something, I, I don't know, I, I mean, we, we put it back for RFP then, I, you know, I think we just have to start.
I, the, the concern I have, yes, we have to start moving and like you don't wanna, we can't go down the road six months, then, oh, now we need to do another RFP. Because we're not gonna get it done then to meet the ARPA requirements, I mean, that's just the reality of it.
I mean, at least we feel good that we, you know, used the money we were given.
Well, definitely.
Even versus losing it.
Right.
Well, we used our money.
They really have a problem trying to attract developers.
But we still have that other allocation that has to be, we haven't done that yet, so we use what we had to allocate at our point, but.
Yeah, we're, we're having troubles now attracting developers with money. We're gonna have a heck of a time attracting them with no money. So, so it's, it's something we're in agreeance, we, we're, we're okay sending official rejection to Blue Loft. Right? And let's now go forward with.
I would motion that if you would.
Motion.
I'd make the motion that we formally reject Blue Loft offers.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And then it is the, sounds like the will of the council to have administration look into how far we could get. With the resources we have, the allocations, right, possibly sewer fund.
Well, I just, I'm just throwing out there, I just, you know, if we're short, if we need like a couple hundred thousand, is that something the council would consider or not?
Yes.
Well, yeah, that's.
I'm just, I'm, because I don't, we cannot go through another debt issuance, you know, that, I would not recommend that at this point, we would just, I would just, but.
You know, what can we do with a phase one or for a phase one, is essentially kind of what we would be entertaining?
If you meant, the, the initial for the whole build out was like three point seven million or something, it was a lot, but I don't know what later, you know, the pricing might look like.
Right.
And if we, you know, yeah, phased it, you know, maybe you phase it, you get the cash back, you can put, you know, some back in and.
Right.
I don't know, but we'll come up with some options, we'll see what we can do.
Alright, call Jared if you need him.
He's not busy or anything.
Okay, good. Any more on housing? Okay. New business, is there anything that we're missing? Okay. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries, meeting adjourned.
Do we have anything for workshop or? I mean, I went through the budget stuff.
Yeah, you went through budget stuff, as far as schedule goes, is that something, right, so next meeting we'll have the preliminary.
Yep.
And then we'll plan a special session.
We have a workshop schedule, scheduled already in August.
Already on there, yeah, is that our second meeting, right?
Yep, correct.
Yep, okay.
If I need to throw in something on the housing, I will have to doodle and send that out and call a special meeting.
Okay. I mean, as far as workshop discussion, I mean, we're just close to budget, we, we might as well act and speak at that point on what we wanna bring up and, and act on with the, any workshop items. So will you make sure you bring our, we'll say our working list of items that we've put together from past workshops? Just so we have.
Like our work list?
Yeah, just so we have that available and, and know, you know, kind of what we were looking forward to or towards, especially as we're budgeting and such.
Oh, yeah, like our working, that document that we have, okay, yep, yep, that I will have, yep.
I mean, I think it'd be prudent to have that during our budget discussions as well.
Okay.
Okay, well, have a good night.
Well, what time?